Scott Pet Products is your local expert on developing, producing, and distributing top-quality pet products. We are currently seeking motivated individuals to join our team. Benefits include insurance after 90 days, PTO, 401K, four-day work week, discounts on products, opportunities for advancement, and so much more. Interested applicants may apply online at scottpet.com or by visiting our Rockville location to fill out a paper application. We look forward to hearing from you.
I know Vermillion County's kicking around in the wind right now.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thanks for coming, folks. Too much on the plate today, but we got some. Thanks for bringing these things, whoever did the commission appointments. I'll rest that here in a little while.
So, is there a motion to approve?
Yes, I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the August 2nd. Twenty twenty. I'll second.
Alright. And we have payroll in amount of $187,335. That's kind of small, isn't it? Is that a bit little small?
That's about average.
Last time, I think it was $188.
Oh, is it? Okay, I always thought it was pushing two.
I'll make a motion, we approve payroll in amount of $187,335 and $22.
I'll say. All fair and say aye. Alright, then we need to acknowledge receivers' payroll claims, accounts payable reporting amount of $53,224.29.
Yeah, you don't. And I make a motion, we acknowledge the receivers' payroll claims in amount of $53,224.29.
All fair and say aye. Alright, new business. I have a few things here. Sheriff has asked us to give them permission to use the fairgrounds for the National Night Out, and I think that's the 21st.
Sorry, I was thinking the 19th, but...
He said that.
Could be the 19th, yeah, he just sent it down.
He did. It's a Tuesday, it'd be the 21st, because that's certain AIC.
It is the 21st.
Okay. So I make the motion that we approve the sheriff's department to use the fairgrounds for the National Night Out on September 21st.
I'll second that.
All fair and say aye. And the Interact Group, that's a student group that went through Rotary from the high schools, River Arch as well as Park Heritage, they've done the painting over graffiti on the Melcher Bridge, and now they have done the Mecca Bridge, and they just did Jackson Bridge, and they're asking permission about the bridge to bridge. They have not looked at that yet, but they had heard that it was very rough shape with the real mangy stuff, is it?
Yeah. Last I was in there, I looked at it.
Okay. So I make a motion that we give permission to the Interact Group under the direction of John Scott and Kathy Alpia to paint over the graffiti in the bridge to bridge on September 18th.
I'll second that.
All fair and say aye. Just so you know, the paint is being paid for by the Commissioned Visitors Commission. We have a budget line item for preserving the bridges, and we typically do is a roof or a paint for that, and we're talking probably less than $1,000 total, why don't we kind of get the stain for these things, and then say clay stains, okay, blends the best we can with the color of the wood. And that's being paid for by the CBC, and the Ace Hardware has been donated, and the rollers and brushes to do that stuff with. I need a tentative approval, this will be for Cindy. Cindy's working on grants all the time, of course, but this one is for broadband, and broadband is one of the allowable expenditures of the recovery money, that 3.8 million. Obviously, we haven't met yet, and we're not committing any dollars, but for her to feel more comfortable about pursuing possible grants and working with providers, she would like to have the insurance that is something we can support and probably will support with that money, which I have no doubt it is. So I make the motion that we authorize Cindy to go ahead and pursue whatever grants might be possible, with the understanding that if we accept that grant, then we would seek to do the matching part from the ARP money.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. That work?
Yep.
Okay. I asked Nick to begin work we could on ordinance concerning making, preventing people making changes to the bridges. I just took down an old duct conduit out of the Mecca Bridge, and we ran the whole length of the bridge. I don't recall anyone ever getting permission to electrify the Mecca Bridge, but it was, but this was a real fire hazard. Every light fixture was broken, there were broken light bulbs hanging in every one of the fixtures. Somebody had broken the conduit and stolen the wire, I don't recall the conduit, all the way down through it. So there's still an electric box coming to it from a source, but it's not connected, so there is no electricity to it now. And so my recommendation would be the same as it's always been, that we just don't allow electric rerun through those old bridges, so then those...
That's kind of hard to say, because we've got it in bridge to bridge because of the fire alarm. And there's lights in it.
And, oh, there are lights in it?
We did that when we built it.
Seems like I remember, yeah, and I'm okay with us if you want to approve it.
We have wires and engineering to...
And I'm okay with us approving that. It's just I want an ordinance where people just can't go do that on their own and...
And I agree with you there, but we gotta...
Oh, yeah, but we do that on a, yeah, on a case-by-case basis, yeah, I'm okay with that. So if someone was to come to appeal and apply to do that, then as long as we approve it, but I just don't want...
Because I know those smoke alarms go to that main box.
Yes, I do remember that.
And it calls people, and they're throwing it down through the...
Yeah, in fact, it does have it at the fire department there, I know.
Yes.
So when you include that, just we would approve on a case-by-case basis.
So what I kind of jotted down is prevent making changes, including conduit, light fixtures, et cetera, even if not of criminal nature without prior written approval. Because if it's criminal nature, then you have elements you gotta go through, but basically, we're just saying, even if you don't have the intent to harm the property, we don't want you making changes to it.
Include painting on that.
Painting, okay.
That would be either, either way graffiti or covered graffiti. You try and do a good thing, but we don't want somebody going and painting purple or painting something.
Well, any reason I differentiate is because if they're like doing graffiti and stuff like that, then that's criminal act. But if they're not doing something that's harmful, I can't think of a good example, but...
Well, really, like these kids, and they're...
You don't have to improve that intent to do...
They are, they're painting these bridges, but I just felt that they just need to ask first, we get improvements for two reasons. One, to make sure we're all reading what color it's going to be, so they're not a bunch of different things, but also to get it covered by our insurance. And now if someone was to get hurt doing a volunteer, for us, we're covered by insurance. It's not about us, like I want to have control, tell who can't, can't do stuff, it's we need to get on the same page and agree with things, and then be covered by the insurance policy.
And I kind of talked about the prior meeting, but you weren't here yet, but I don't think I've adequately explained it such that you did today, so...
Okay. As long as that works, if you're okay with that.
Yep.
Cemetery Commission, we are in the process, you know, we have a Cemetery Commission forever. It's been kind of dormant for the last couple of years, and so I, some time ago, we made three new ones, Mr. Cemetery Board, if you remember that, and I contacted Jim Wilcox, who's president of Cemetery Board, and asked if he's still interested in pursuing that, and then go, and he is. We've got some people on there probably who aren't interested, they've aged since then, so they may not be interested, but we just need to get reorganized, so with permission of the Commission, I'll pursue that reorganization, the Cemetery Commission, and get that, get that going. And at some point, I'm not ready to today, but I'd like us to begin a conversation of creating a cover bridge preservation commission. If we had a place where money could be donated to the county for a specific project that we know would go just for cover bridges, I've had multiple people say that they would do that, that they just don't want to make a donation to the, to the county, and even if you put it on a donation line with earmark for something, it could still be taken and moved someplace else.
So I'm thinking maybe the community foundation might be an avenue to explore as far as a fund that can do that.
Well, actually, we, actually, we have funds in the county to do that. We've got about, well, several, actually about $300,000 right now in bridge preservation funds. So we have funds to fund that kind of a thing, and I haven't talked around about this yet, but if we still work for the Highway Department, they would still do what they, what they do and what they can do.
I was just thinking about the private donations coming in, maybe as far as...
Okay, but I think we're okay as long as we have a fund just for that, that goes to that fund, but we need to find out about how that works.
And we create a home real fund on that.
Okay.
And if we had a home real fund in the 4,000 digits, we would just have afford donations for the bridge and expenses for the bridge.
And they would, they could only be spent on those things, it couldn't be taken in the general fund under some transfer? Okay, that was a concern, people want to donate.
We'd have to have an ordinance created for the home real fund.
Okay, so if we could do that, that'd be great. There really are several people willing to do that, but they're just concerned about just making a donation for the cover bridges, because they don't know where that's going.
Right, yeah, accountability, yeah.
Because there are some things that Randy just hasn't had time to do, can't do. You talked about several years ago about how really on a regular basis, somebody needs to get underneath the DRC and clean the RCD off for all that false downsets on, that kind of thing, and we did, we have money, we could afford to do that, but I have to make that, the Highway Department spend their time doing that kind of a thing. We could arrange for roofs and sightings and that commission, or do that kind of a thing.
I can show you several right now that's...
So we need to...
They cleaned the lower cords of Sarabies and the goats.
Yep, we need to hire that up, get...
I can create a fund for that, yeah, our ordinance creating a fund.
Just look at that if you would.
We already have a workable template when we created a different fund, so...
Okay. You guys got any new business? All right, so I've got a hand type check here for Terry, written for $384. What's that for?
He wanted a pipe put in, and then he decided he didn't want to, because we collect the monies before we get...
Oh, okay, so you had his money, it's just going back to him? Okay. Well, if I book a KOA campground and cancel, I gotta pay a $10 cancellation fee. Should we just be $10 out of it or something for the cancellation fee?
No, we've never done that.
Well, okay, then. So is there a...
Is there stuff we can use elsewhere or sell or...
No, this pipe just come down on it.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
So is there a motion to approve the anti-check?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the anti-check for Terry, written for $384.
And I'll second that.
All fair and say aye. Alright, and this Indian Department Correction Annual Accounting Misdominant Deposit, what is that?
This is something that they started last year that we're getting reimbursed one time instead of on a monthly basis. So we got to reimburse it this year for $10,793.83 that came in.
Okay. We're going to approach legislation on it next year, we talked about that at the last legislative committee meeting. Some counties are okay with just getting a straight average of what it used to be in the past, or you're gonna get that much every year front as a social billing. I think we're okay with that, I think we've been okay with this so far, but that could change yet, so. Alright, and you got EMT report, National Night Out, we already approved. Traveler claim, Nick, anything that you need from us on that?
I don't think I saw, I don't think I had that in my pack yet. I'm sure I probably saw it at some point, but...
There's three of them there.
Yeah, I don't have those.
I want is just...
Here's an extra packet.
The last is...
Do you want that?
Here you go.
Maybe some of the front back of that.
Is that for us? No, the first one is just out at the park where a tree fell, where they denied the claim. Then there's two new filings, but I don't think either one of them were highway-related.
Good, they did the right thing on that, huh?
Another tree that fell on somebody's tent, and that's a sheriff's situation.
Yeah, no, I was familiar with that one. The Treland one, I assume we sent that on the insurance, and they'll handle it the same way they did the other one? Do you want these back?
We've got copies up here.
Oh, okay. There's nothing for us to do on any of those?
Okay. And then we have ordinance here about vacating public alley and...
So you, you may remember that from a year or two ago. I think the only thing that changed was the description was off, and so they're wanting a new description to be recorded. Somehow the attorney that prepared the ordinance, I didn't do it, but whoever did had the description wrong in it. So they're just asking it be passed as amended.
We have a copy of all that, if you need to see any of that.
But we'd already vacated the right...
You did, you, some of you guys even went down there and looked at it, yeah. It was just the wrong description on it, and they found it when doing other things, I think, and...
So will this be a new ordinance then?
Well, so, I mean, I think Laura hasn't marked this a new ordinance, but...
We need to amend the old one?
In my, in my thought, it would be 2019-22A, amended version.
And then I don't need a new ordinance to...
Right. You're submending the prior ordinance.
It's already been vacated, we're just amending the description, we're changing the description.
Because otherwise, if it's a new one, then they have to go down through all the notice requirements, all that. Basically, in a legal term, they call it a scribbler's error. Basically, whoever wrote up the ordinance just wrote the wrong description. It was advertised as the right description, but the ordinance, whoever did it, put in as a wrong description.
And you're confident that what that description describes is, is what we actually approved?
I, I looked at it versus what we had seen published, and this is the description as far as what was published in the paper, this current one is.
So they have changed the description, has they approved this house or anything on...
No, they're not, they're not taking any of you guys' houses, or anybody, neighbors or anything. It does vacate the alley, the other one did something with a right-of-way, I think, or something of that nature, and it was awful a little bit, but...
I think that was the approach after the highway, I'm sure the question was from before.
Right, yeah, but...
Alright, you're comfortable with not changing anything other than correcting the description?
I, I, right, I think it just needs to be marked as an amendment to that ordinance.
Then I make the motion that we adopt ordinance number 2019-22A as a correction to the description on ordinance number 20, 2019-22.
I'll second that.
All fair and say aye. Okay.
I think that cleans it up better than having a separate ordinance, because then we have two ordinances on the...
Start all over with the letters and all that stuff, yep, okay. You guys have any...
Does this need to be, need to be signed or anything like that?
Yeah, they'll need a signed version, and I assume they'll want a copy of it once it's all done. I'd like a copy anyway.
I don't want to change this on the front to a...
Yeah.
That work?
Yep.
You have any other business?
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
Little thing.
Anything's good as far as I know.
Okay, so we'll go to old business, have I got any old business? I've got a couple things for Randy, but we'll get those, Randy gets up here.
I have one thing, I have one about big leases, that could be part of Randy's, the greater...
Uh, yeah, yeah.
To approve that contract, if they went with the capital lease.
And, and that was a recommendation, I mean, went with the seven-year capital lease, and then that...
With the council.
Yes, yeah, that was a recommendation, so we just need to vote on it.
They had sent Thursday, they're...
Chris didn't get the paperwork yet.
Okay.
He was waiting on it to come in, but it was too late to send.
Okay, well, I can sign anytime, so...
We can go ahead and approve it though tonight, can't we?
In fact, we...
He can go ahead and sign the paperwork.
Okay. Sheriff's not here, but all he had was just the, that night out going to the Fairgrounds, we already approved that. So Randy, you're up.
We'll have a quick one.
Yeah, so far, I like that. You get a chance to knock that layer by chance yet?
No, I haven't.
Okay. In your experience, what's a typical amount of time to allow them to respond to you and do something about it?
Probably four weeks.
Okay.
That is an estimate on the...
Oh, good.
tearing off the roof and replacing it with metal on the Sim Smith covered bridge.
Okay. Is that more than usual?
No.
Really? I thought we were using the $10,000 range.
Yeah. Bids on the bridge, you know.
That's all CBC's ever paid before, yeah, this is, this is one, one span, kind of short little thing.
Yeah, it is, but...
That seems like a lot of money to me.
Price materials are up too. Did you ask for any other bids? I did, but no one ever got back with me.
Well, I know the CBC isn't, hadn't planned on spending that much money on it, I guess you have money in your budget to do that too, then, is that...
Yeah, we could help on it.
Cover bridge money that you have, because we typically do 10...
I thought, last I told you 30.
I can't remember the conversation now, well, we took it up, it may, it may have been, we agreed to take it at the 30. Let me, let me see.
We could help on it.
Well, I'm thinking now, you said, I think we did, because I think they approved 20, and I'm pretty sure 20 would do it. So I'm thinking we took it to 30. Let me ask real quickly here, so we know, so we get this done, and we get that, get rolling on this, this will just take a second. If you answer this phone, we'll see.
How long is that bridge, Randy?
I don't remember, off the top of my head.
Good afternoon, this is Doug.
Hey, Doug, Jimmy's, we're in commission, we're in commission meeting right now, and we have a bid before us for the Sim Smith covered bridge, and we were thinking, Randy, Randy, remember, you, thought you said it, and I remember having the conversation, and I think it was more than 20, did we approve up to $30,000 for the Sim Smith bridge?
No, the roof we approved up to $12,000, the roof was corporate, $10,000.
Okay, okay.
I mean, that, that's what I remember.
Okay, that'll work then.
I know it was 12, because Diane and I are here in January, I remind you, Diane, we got $12,000, we gotta step back from the bridge.
Right, right, okay, good enough, thanks, sir, see ya. For 12. I was thinking they'd been 10 in the past, and, but then I remember that conversation, I'm thinking that wasn't enough, but we must have taken from 10 up to 12, thinking 12 might be enough to cover it then. So...
Hang on there. Besides including removing all the...
Sure.
Wood shakes.
We may need to...
Disposing of them.
Wait, see if we can get another, another bid?
Yeah, there's $3,560 for the metal for that roof. I just priced it yesterday.
So that'd be $25,000 for removal and put that...
You still got screws and ridge cap, but it's still not that much. I took a...
Well, you know better than me, is that a reasonable price?
Six, six months ago, I think, probably when metal was, everything was even higher, it's dropped something, most of that has. Dunbar Bridge, 180 feet, correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't that $22,000?
I believe so.
There were 70 rafters that got replaced, 100% of the skip sheeting, and all new metal. So I think he's, I mean, my own opinion, I know what Sim Smith Bridge is, and it's not near as long as a Dunbar public camp.
And what did it cost?
$22,000.
Okay.
It's probably twice that long.
Okay.
And it has all new skip sheeting on it.
That just seems high.
It's, it's high, it is.
Yeah.
But it's hard to find somebody.
It is, hey, he's been waiting quite a long, if somebody can get back to him on this, so you wanna...
But that, that's what really bugs me is, you're looking at 3,600 bucks in material, and normally you're that 50/50. Most of the time, your labor will be close to what material is. Sometimes it runs a little over, but if he's after, shingles off and dispose of that, or the wood shakes and dispose of that, there would, there's gonna be quite a bit more, and there would shake, yeah. So, I mean, I could see 17, 18,000, almost 29,000 scares me.
Well, you wanna hold off and see if we get another, another bid?
I prefer not to be involved in it, but I can make a couple phone calls, some guys I know that do.
We probably have money in the cover bridge fund, county, I know there's money there to make up the difference, I don't have to come out of Randy's budget to do that, that's why those 20s are for.
I think we got around 70,000 when they're approved or appropriated, I think it is.
I think there's 300 in the, in the fund altogether, I think, so, so there's funds, there's money there to do it, I don't want to wait too long, I like to have them before the winner gets in again.
He can't build until after the bridge festival, late October, first of November.
I'm okay with that, as long as the four winner sets in.
Okay, I'll make some phone calls and...
Okay. Well, Randy, if you mind, then just hold on.
Another thing is the, the, what do you call that? Not the three rib or five rib, but the complete corrugated metal, the galvanized.
Standing rib?
No, he's talking about the regular corrugated.
Yeah, like the old time metal.
As far as I'm concerned, stay the heck away from it.
Okay.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the only reason I say that is, the state specked it out on the Shields Town Bridge, we did it, and after they specked it out, the engineers told them they shouldn't use it. It does not have a high enough rib, but when you get wind blowing, the water gets under that, it only laps one rib. I mean, it looks good, because it's, that's what it was years ago, but when you have more like the pro rib with an inch and quarter tall rib, and it locks over pretty tight, you hardly ever get any water, and Shields Town leak like a sieve. It didn't, when it was straight down rain, it never would leak, but when the wind would blow, it'd get right over there, because it's only half, five inches relief on it, so... Which you can buy that, I know down at Brownstown, they stock the type of metal you're talking about.
So you wanted him to change the spec, so when he asks...
Well, I would go with the pro rib. I mean, pretty much the...
Could that be any kind of, this is painted metal. Yeah. Don't say, don't say.
Yeah, it don't say.
That chart you have there, I, I would think that'd be the standing rib stuff, isn't it, or is it just corrugated metal?
Yeah, R rib and G rib, and the standing seam, that's the two.
Yeah, that's, that's what Dan thought about standing seam, yeah.
No, I'm just talking about the...
Complete coordination.
He's talking about what you used to see years ago, with some of the first metal that come out, but...
Yeah, I know, that is, yes, I got on my ship, I don't think that's what that chart's from, though, I think that chart, yeah, I didn't think it was.
But I was wondering.
The new stuff's like this, there's nine inches, like...
Right.
On the center, on the side, there are nine inches. That works real good, holds up, it's got a good lock on the very...
That's what I would want to, that's what we got in our house, yeah.
Can you get that in galvanized, or just have to get the color?
No, you can, it's there, galvanized. Yep.
So I actually have a plan on that, rather than just some old, old style corrugated, although you could do the old style corrugated, you'll have, went over another, another row to lock it in, but you're just losing distance, but you're losing a couple inches off each sheet, so probably another couple sheets of metal each, each way. But I like the looks of that standing rib better anyway.
Tough call.
I mean, you do something that's...
Do you mean G rib or R rib?
Well, I don't...
Standing rib is flat, and then two...
I don't know the difference between G rib or R rib, I don't know what those are.
On each side.
I don't know what those are.
There's R rib and G rib and standing rib, see, it's no, hardly no coordination in it, except on the ends.
This what you're talking about there, the R rib?
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about?
Yep.
Alright, so the R rib is what you're wanting, okay. Yeah. See, our standing rib has two, two raises between each standing rib. It's got the ribbon on each side, and then it's got two squirmers as you go, come across.
Oh, the four rib.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, that, I don't know if you can still get that or not.
Oh, okay, I know.
They have three ribbing and a four rib too.
Okay.
On each side and one down the side.
That's why they screw it down and all those ribs.
It goes back to the old ones too.
Okay, well, so we want Randy to keep seeking, searching for another bid?
I would like to see if he can put out for another bid, it does seem off quite a bit, it's, I mean, I'm not going out.
Okay, well, let's hold off on that then, what else you got?
Well, here's the grade releases, well, the information on them.
Which we met the other day, you couldn't come, and Bruce and I met with Roy and Randy and the sales, and talked about the benefits of each of these ways of going. Currently, we're on the operating lease, and that's the one that had, had where we had to pay ourselves, um, tax. The tax is not a big deal, because it comes out of one pocket and back into the other, so we're just paying ourselves. The difficult part about this is we're limited on the number of hours, and if we go over those hours, you got a high cost of the added additional hours. Plus, when you turn them back in, the tires have to be at least fifty percent, or you gotta replace the tires before you turn them back in. So now you're buying new tires on this piece and turning it back in. Whereas on the capital lease, uh, the interest rate's a lot better, it's two and a quarter percent instead of four, point seven five. And, uh, the tires you don't have to replace, you'll get ding for them on the value at the end, but a little bit, and you're only, you're only looking at two and a half percent of that difference between how much more tire you wore down. Uh, so I think it was Roy's, and I, I don't know, was your opinion in agreement with that, to go with the seven year capital lease?
When I, I thought at that meeting we left, Roy was going to really look at this eight year.
Yeah.
Because we would save twenty thousand dollar annual payment.
Did he call you?
But he never did call.
Oh, he was gonna try, I talked to him, he's recommending the seven year.
He went back to the seven, okay, and that's fine, it's just that when we left that meeting, he said, I really like this eight year.
And a three, and a three year turn back.
Yeah, three year turn back, because it was gonna save us twenty thousand a year, but if the council decided the seven, I was okay, I don't hate it.
That's why he called, sir, I thought he was gonna call you though.
What does this do with the lease I just signed last week?
Well, you just have no lid, I guess, and.
Is it the same company?
The Grader's already been delivered, correct?
I don't think it's really the same company, I think it's another company.
But it's just the lease company?
I don't know if it is, well, I presume it is.
Yeah, there is.
But this is going to be a lease, we're at the end of that seven year, we give them a dollar and it's our Grader's.
Right, I'm just worried about, we've signed a lease already legally, so if it's not the same company, we're gonna have trouble getting out of that lease.
Hello, sir?
Hi there, hey, we're in commission meeting, I just want to confirm before we vote on this, that your recommendation is the seven year capital lease, is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, all right, it's all need, no, thanks.
All right.
Yeah, seven years capital lease, yeah, it is same company, they already, they already started, they're the ones that came with the other proposal.
So we'll just want something writing indicating they're gonna terminate the prior lease if they'll give us that.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, you'll want two leases for this, right here.
They're the ones that brought that to us.
They were here the other night, and they talked like it was no.
No problem.
No, if it's the same company, it should have been.
His company was, I've got paperwork right here, we haven't even turned it in yet.
Okay.
But they needed to by end of this month, I think, is what they said. So that was what we had this week, end of this, end of this week, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
So I make the motion, and then we go with the seven years capital lease plan?
No.
Go, fair say aye, all right. So, the seven year capital lease, is that the one we've already signed?
No.
All right, but it's think like, we didn't have to change it, we did seven, so.
We signed the exact same one we had last week.
This is gonna be a seven year with the option in five years.
Trade you back, yeah.
She's supposed to be the one, whatever they had down here, I don't know what it was now.
They gave us the number, what, she's supposed to be worth, trade you back, yeah.
And that becomes, has a trade in on dues.
Right.
Or if something happens, we lose all our money, then we surely scrape up enough for two years?
Yeah.
And then within that two years, give them a dollar.
You're just out of it, yeah. And you don't have to replace the tires, and you're not limited on the hour you can run them. The, the big thing about the five years, that's when the warranty runs up, it's under warranty for five years, so after that, you're on your own. So now you go beyond the five, and it blows up now, it's on you to fix that, but that's why the five years important. All right, so where, do you need a new paperwork sign, you wanna let us know? I can do it, and if I'm not here, Dan is, we're leaving Thursday, so.
Well, he's got your, your names on the paperwork.
Okay.
That's why I asked if you were gonna be here to this meeting, we thought it was gonna be here.
But he had, yeah, he had.
No, they have to six o'clock to get it sent out to him, so.
Okay. So I'll check tomorrow.
He's probably gonna be here in the morning.
Okay, I can take care of that tomorrow, that's not a problem. All right.
Do you think we oughta, just in case the paperwork doesn't come before Thursday, give Dan permission to go ahead?
Sure, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
Is that okay, just in case?
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
I'll just kinda make a, make a motion that, on this capital lease that we'll be signing, that we give Jim the authority to sign the lease since we've already approved it. But if for some reason it doesn't come in before he leaves on Thursday, that Dan.
I'll send it that, all fair say aye. Okay.
I'll call him, tell him that too.
Okay.
He'll actually get the paperwork redone, we have different names on it.
Yeah, surely they get it next, tomorrow, next day.
He's probably, he's gonna get it seen.
Okay, that'll work.
It's not in time for this.
All right, what else you got?
Uh, we got our chip and sealin' done, except for Henry Road, I need to do some wedging on it before we chip and seal it. And we started paving Jeffrey Ford, we got some gear run down the, uh, Rosedale Road done. And we started a little bit on the north part, we had to run the Dreschens. I want to have that done maybe a couple days.
Okay.
That's about it, does you guys have anything to me?
Staff wise, where are you, still down two?
Uh, yeah, I think two.
Okay.
We got one coming tomorrow.
Good, CDL?
Yes, he has CDL.
Good.
And, uh, then I think I'll still be down two, because I forgot I can add in another labor or two.
Okay. Okay.
We're getting a little better.
I did have the guy call again about eight hundred to gravel on it, so.
Which eight hundred?
Pretty busy, down on the end of it where he rides a motorcycle.
Yeah, we talked about the last meeting, Jim wanted here.
Yeah, I can't remember. Which eight hundred was?
Yeah, it's down by Life or down with the.
Oh, okay.
It's got a big buildup of.
Big buildup of gravel on it.
Okay.
And he's, he thinks it's dangerous when he drives his motorcycle.
I told him that's me when you was working in that area and had to sweep her down there, because you had other irons in the fire, but.
Yeah, I'll try. It's, we should have this little brooms, I'll try to, I think, run over there and broom it tomorrow while we're.
So. I told him, I jogged your memory, so.
Where are we cutting, cutting brush now, where are we at?
Well, I'm not cutting any right now, the, the branch on the tank out back, we found after we got some of the metal off of it. The wires were pulled from the motor, I had the motor burned up too, so. I don't have anyone on the brush, yeah. Well, we gotta finish up four twenty-five west. And then we're gonna come down to Plank Road, and then three fifty west, keep bus drivers happy. And got a spot down there on Rosedale Road we need to do, then Roy wants us to go over to hit one hundred north again.
You said Plank Road, I was gonna mean, I gotta call him, I think.
And then, uh, when I told you the series toward the.
Three fifty west, yes.
GPS off there.
I didn't say that. We're going Plank Road to three fifty.
Okay.
And then.
And. Ferndale, and what was that up there, that area, ten fifty is that number I gave you?
Seven fifty thousand.
Off of Grace Road, take Grace Road down, and it curves, and it splits, and that little, little short road there, you said? What was that?
Oh, ten fifty east.
Yeah, that was ten fifty, yeah, so are they still on your radar?
Yeah, they're on list, but I don't know exactly when we get there.
Ferndale two minutes, it's a little, little cave you're driving through when you get.
Well, we did send, I did send a mower down through there, and it helped us some, but it turned up real great.
Okay.
Since you brought it up, we had our first ordinance violation on that, uh, Ferndale area as far as the weight capacity.
Really?
The guy paid his fine, so.
Good, fair. He did even have to do that to people, it's just, it's just asking not to drive there, just don't do it, just don't.
All right, well, that's what I told him, I said, look, you know.
We don't want money in your pocket, we want you to stay off the road, yeah.
But he paid a two hundred dollar fine, so.
I've had discussion with a couple drivers that, yeah.
So the officers were enforcing, I guess, is what I tell you.
Well, that's good, good. Is there any more damage to seven twenty, that bridge on seven twenty that you can get all the time? So they're doing okay with that still, okay, good. I got complaints that there's still semis on there, a lady who called full time for them, they were hitting the bridge, but I didn't think they'd done any damage to us. But I've not been there for a month, so I don't know, good.
No, it's holding up all right so far.
Good.
I haven't seen any indications where someone's hit it either.
Okay, we talked one time about widening that loop at the end of that, so we can swing out of any interest, so doing that, you think we need to do that still, or?
I don't think we seem like we need to, we're not down.
Okay.
Not gonna have to have a phone pedals to move, that takes almost a neck congress.
Yeah, corndock, one the other way around, what do you got?
That threatened one on, um, New Disruptor, New Disruptor, Niceville Road.
All right, enough of you from us.
Get them to remove one down six hundred west, and took them about eight months.
We did the same thing with the ambulance building out there, getting moved out.
Listen here, I said, I want this done six days or five. They said to be out there in about thirty.
Sometimes a lot of tapes, he'd do that, but it's what it takes. All right, uh, thanks sir.
Mm-hmm, have a good evening.
You too. Anybody else have anything for a good cause, public comments? Motion goes, journey, journey.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg.